Good evening, if you will bow your head with me please. Our Father, we thank you for this day, for the many blessings that we have received. We thank you for this city and this county where it's live. We thank you for all those who make our community safe, for those who volunteer and work in civic service and civic duty. We thank you for all the many things that we have to share with our children and hope that we will do well each day in doing that. We thank you for all your love, in the name of the Father, and Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, council members. I see the schools are closed for tomorrow, so the schoolchildren and the meteorologists have been working together again, I understand?
It's a conspiracy.
It's a conspiracy. Alright, but you had before your consent agenda, you've had an opportunity to take a look at that. Now's a good time to bring up any questions on the consent agenda, and if not, I'll entertain a motion that we accept our consent agenda as it is presented.
So move. Second.
Motion second, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time we'll hear from Job Hastings and Associates regarding the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee comprehensive annual financial reports for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2009. Mr. Job, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll try to keep this shorter than President Obama did last night, but feel free to applaud it.
It is happening.
If you feel so led. No, I'm gonna make it short, so. Boom. I'm gonna go through the highlights of the report. As you all know, this is a rather lengthy document, some hundred and seventy, eighty pages, and just a note for anyone out there who's interested in this, will be posted on the website, on the city's website, so it will be available to all citizens. As I mentioned, just want to hit some of the highlights. The city has around thirty separate funds, individual funds, and so that's why there's so much information in here. Each one of those funds has to be audited separately, and that's part of our job as auditors. Just to point out, our report this year is a standard, clean opinion. Nothing that is noted in that report is our standard. One thing I think to point out, especially in this year of economic downturn, was that the city experienced a growth in the general fund, fund balance of some four million dollars, and I think that's to be commended. That you can see on page thirty-six of this report. The general fund had a increase, as I mentioned, of four point oh seven eight million dollars, and I think that is largely attributable to many of the department heads, or most of the department heads' controlling cost. There was a freeze in hiring, as you know, and I think the city acted prudently in maintaining financial stability in a time of economic crisis, and I don't think a lot of cities would be able to see that kind of increase, so I think that's to be commended for that. I'd also point out that in doing those thirty fund audits, we had a chance to meet with many department heads and work with many of those areas of the city, and we experienced, in all cases, a great deal of professionalism and cooperation, and we appreciate that, because that helps this process go very smoothly. And especially the city recorder's office, they do an outstanding job, and we appreciate their help. Let me just point out a few things here. Starting on page three, are several pages called Management's Discussion and Analysis. And for anyone who's interested in an overview of the city and its operations, its financial condition, and just some explanation of things that happened during this past fiscal year, that gives a good explanation and discussion of those items from management's point of view. So that's a good summary of the city's financial operations for the year. As you go on back, under the Government-Wide Financial Statements tab, that starts on page As I mentioned in the past, there's two ways that government financial statements are presented, and one of those ways is more of a long-term view, which includes all the assets of the city, and it includes capital assets, long-term debt, all assets that the city owns, and it's meant to be a long-term perspective of how well the city is prepared, not only for the upcoming budget year, but for many years in the future. And this statement is on page twenty, and as you'll see there, total assets as of June 30th, oh nine, were one point three billion dollars for the entire city. As I said, that includes all the capital assets of the city, including roads and anything, fixed assets of the city. And you'll see the net assets, which is the total assets less the debt at June 30th, amounted to eight hundred and fifty-three million dollars. On the next page, Statement of Activities, this presents all the government functions. It presents different functions like police and fire protection in different areas of the city, and it shows the expenses of each one of those functions or programs of the city in the first column, and then the revenues that are associated with those programs are shown in the next few columns there. This includes water and sewer, and all the governmental activities of the city, and for the year, there was a change in net assets, or an increase in net assets, under this approach of forty-three million dollars.
And all those assets are put on the books at cost and then depreciated?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Now, the infrastructure assets, roads and that type of asset, in some cases were put on in an estimate, an engineering estimate, because up until recently, those assets were not recorded on a governmental entity, and the governmental standards board changed how those are presented, and we were to go back and record those assets, so there were estimates for those. But everything else is recorded at cost.
So older assets would have been fully depreciated and not shown as assets?
In some cases, yes, sir. They are depreciated over time, and it varies from a short term for equipment of five years or so to forty or so for buildings.
So Mitchell Nielsen, Hobgood, are those zeroed out?
Those would probably be near zero.
Alright, thank you.
And under the Fund Financial Statements, this is the other view, and those are presented on a more short-term view or a budget perspective, and what we're concerned with there is more of the short-term assets. What's available for next year's budget, what's gonna have to be paid within a short period of time, and it's more of a short-term perspective on looking at the financial aspects of the And under this approach, we had total assets for governmental funds of one hundred and thirty-four million dollars. Again, that's just the short-term type assets, it doesn't include any capital assets. And a fund balance, total fund balance of all governmental funds, of sixty-three point nine million dollars at June 30th.
And the deferred revenue number, being the large number, is made up of?
Deferred revenue?
Under liabilities.
Yes, sir. That is the...
Is property tax?
Yes.
For the coming year, the board requires us to pick that up, even though we don't have a tax rule as of June 30th, we have to estimate that. It's not all property tax, but that's the bulk of it.
Okay. Those property taxes that have been assessed, but not actually collected. And the reason that's deferred is because it's not available in a short period of time. It's gonna be well after year end before that actually is realized in cash, so that's why that's deferred.
And the general purpose school portion of that is, is that what you assume, is a county portion or something?
That also includes other types of taxes, sales tax, and the other taxes that would be collected in the school system that would be deferred, past sixty days. We only accrue, actually record as an asset for the amount recorded or collected within sixty days.
Okay. Thank you.
And over on page twenty-six, this shows the total revenues and expenditures for all governmental funds, including the general fund and the school funds, and the four funds presented there are major funds. As I said, there's twenty-nine funds in the city, but the four major funds are presented there, and then a total column for all of the other funds are combined there. So all governmental funds for the year had total revenues of one hundred and seventy-three million dollars, and the net change in fund balances for all governmental funds was sixteen point seven eight million dollars as an increase. And you'll see there, the four point oh seven eight million of increase in general fund that I mentioned, that's presented in that first column there.
And those other financing sources, the thirty-three, nine, forty-two, one ninety-eight, which gives you that balance that says transfers in, out, issuance of debt, proceeds from sale of land, primarily debt?
The proceeds of debt...
Other financing sources?
Yes, sir. The issuance of debt is presented separately in the TML fund column there, the fourth column, that thirty-three million dollars that was...
And I'm looking at the, over on the far left side, under general fund, issues...
That's transfers to other departments like recreation and senior citizens, that we help fund their budgets, transfers to debt service, because we actually pay the debt out of debt service fund. So that's transfers out from general fund to the other city funds for their operations.
You can see a detail of those, Mayor, on page thirty-six.
Thank you.
There's school, school system would be a part of that, school debt service is a part of that, there's a transfer to the debt service fund.
Alright.
So, several rows.
And as we're on page thirty-six, real quickly there, Mr. Job, we had intended in our budget to take one point five million dollars out of the fund balance originally, under our budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it was right, it was budgeted to have to dip into reserves of one point five million dollars. You actually added to reserves four point oh seven eight million.
So we were at about a five and a half million dollar swing from what we budgeted in last year's budget, and then what we actually ended up with.
And I would say that's not typical.
Excuse me, Frank Rutter. Thank you. I think that's one thing to understand, too, is that when we say that we were four million seventy-eight thousand dollars to the good, then that basically means that we, in essence, were four million dollars under budget on what we had really figured on spending on our budget last year, or between revenue and expenses. Is that pretty close?
About five and a half million.
After we figured the one and a half that we didn't.
I think you did experience some increases in some areas. Sales tax actually did increase, but it was well below what you had budgeted, sales tax revenues, for example. So I think although we did have some modest increases in some of those taxes, they weren't what you had projected, and expenses, like I mentioned, were held in control, and that all together added to that. And I think the other thing to point out is behind the statistical section, starting on page one forty-four, this gives quite a bit of information about the last ten years, especially, a lot of information about property taxes, and it shows how, what trends that we've had in the city, especially how the city has grown over that time period, and what that has done to the financial condition. You can see the growth in property assessment values over that time period. And then there's other schedules as far as just full-time equivalents in the city, how that has grown over this time period. As of this, at June 30th, the city had nineteen hundred and seventy-one employees, full-time equivalent employees, that's in all departments. And that's grown, in the last ten years, some five hundred employees. And behind the Single Audit section, it gives a listing of all the federal money that has been received by the city. This would include from all departments of the federal government, Department of Transportation, the school funds received through the Department of Education, and funds through HUD, they would all be listed there. And I would just mention that as far as the tornado damage that occurred, I think Melissa and her department are in process of getting those funds retrieved through FEMA, and most of that cost will be recovered through that program. I would mention that this report from last year was submitted for the Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting with the Government Financial Officers Association in Chicago, and it received that award last year, and this one has been submitted for that same award, and that's to be commended also. Although it doesn't show anything about the financial performance of the city, it shows something about the financial responsibility of the city, we believe, and it's an important award when it comes to bond ratings and that sort of thing. I think that's about all I had. If anyone has any more questions?
Out of the three point four million we spent on the Good Friday tornado, how much have we received back so far?
That is, it's a long process, and they have to actually come on site and do a lot of analysis, and so I don't know that there's been a tremendous amount of that recovered yet, but it will be by the time it's some eighty-eight percent or so, I think, would be recovered.
We don't have a lot of it in yet. We have gotten a small payment. We're trying to work with them where they don't have to come often to do those analyses. We're trying to get it as much as we can complete before they come, but should they, I think we're getting pretty close, except for water and sewer.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
I think you beat President Obama's dam. Are there any questions for Mr. Job regarding the, all the information that he's given to you? Any questions, any other questions? Mr. Job and his firm, for a number of years, have done an excellent job for us, and certainly we appreciate the time and attention that they have presented to it. It's certainly a comprehensive document and very readable in many ways, if you can take a little time to study it, but we appreciate what you have done in handling this financial report, and obviously, if the public has any questions, they can send them through the mayor's office, eight four nine two six two nine, and we'll try to get you any answers that we can't provide for you, and certainly the document is available for you, too, also on the website. Alright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we need a motion to accept this?
Wouldn't hurt.
So move.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer with regards to construction of a drainage system for Leaf Avenue area.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and members of the city council. I do have for you tonight one item concerning the Leaf Avenue area drainage system. Got some pictures I'd like to, just to kind of begin and run through. I know when everyone got very afraid whenever I started doing technology, but we'll see if that works or not. I think the pictures on the screen will be, make it very evident, some of the problems that the subdivision has been occurring for some time now. Just to give you a little history, city council approved a drainage study in May of 2009 that was performed by SEC. The reason for the drainage study was to evaluate the existing system at the Leaf Avenue area, Leaf Avenue, Hazelwood, and Clark Boulevard, which I've also included a map here that will be going a little bit more detail later, and then we've also included a map, a smaller map in your package. Just briefly, the subdivision began in the construction in the late nineteen fifties. Basically, the construction consisted of cutting roads into the existing flat terrain and constructing houses at or near the surrounding grades. The combination of the very flat terrain and the construction of houses to near the surrounding grade has given homeowners in the area many sleepless nights and anxious days, as water has continued to collect in their yards and under their houses. We conducted interviews during the study, which indicated the problem really began to become first evident in the early nineteen seventies, as some of the area developed around this subdivision, so really about ten to fifteen years after the subdivision began. It continued to worsen as the very mature trees continued to lose their leaves, and silty deposits began to be built up in the ditches. City maintenance crews have attempted improvements many times and have provided some relief with their efforts, but only for a short time. Ditches have been recut, cross drains cleaned out, and driveway pipes replaced with very little impact. The area has proven to be much too flat to reconstruct any form of a grass-lined ditch and to maintain it for any reasonable amount of time. A walk through the yards at this time of the year reveals that a very spongy, saturated ground, which cannot accept additional water. I believe most members of the city council have been out over the last, really, several months and have experienced that. I provided to council, prior to the meeting, a letter from Mr. Rick Templeton, the director of Street Department, which supports, which outlines the work that he's done over the years on the project, and supports the finding of our project, or of our study. Staff, as I said, have collected many of the photographs over the last few years indicating the severity of the problem, many of those being shown on the overhead screen. I've also included some in your package. Additionally, we have also received a petition from the impacted residents, pretty much a hundred percent, which is, that was collected primary in March and April of 2009, urging the city to act on the problem. As I mentioned previously, the council heard this request and authorized staff to enter into an agreement with SEC and to analyze both surface drainage patterns and to determine the subsurface groundwater flow. Subsequently, we've completed, over the last several months, the following items. Held an advertised public meeting at the local Lutheran church to gain valuable input from the neighborhood regarding the existing condition. Review topographic information and created drainage maps of the affected areas. Gathered field data, including inverts of existing pipes, catch basins, and ditch elevations to assist in determining surface water patterns. Installed eight groundwater monitoring wells to evaluate local subsurface conditions. Analyze existing stormwater system that was in place. Evaluated alternatives to efficiently route the stormwater runoff through and around the mature neighborhood without significantly impacting its natural beauty. Developed estimates of the alternatives to determine the most cost-effective means of completing this. Held a second advertised public meeting to share our findings and recommendations, and again, receive input from the neighborhood regarding the proposed improvements, and revised our proposed improvements based on the input to address as many of the neighbors' concerns as possible, and revise our cost estimate accordingly. If I could, I'd just like to go over, just real briefly... Sisson? Yeah, I think so. Just real briefly, what we determined with this project was that we could divide the drainage system into two patterns. As I mentioned, very flat drainage system, having trouble with water moving, had quite a bit of ponding water up in this area, and then also up in this area, and had quite a bit of problem in these backyards also. We decided, we divided it into the north phase and to the south phase. The north phase, basically, being divided by Hazelwood Street, and consisting of Hazelwood Street and Leaf Avenue, and extending over to a existing storm drainage, a concrete ditch that actually goes behind the houses on Huntington Drive. The south phase was basically Leaf Avenue down to Clark Boulevard, and then extended on south of Clark Boulevard, and eventually intercepting with the existing system in Evergreen Cemetery. We really felt like if we could intercept all the water, because now, basically, the water just comes from this area, and gradually, just at a snail's pace, just sheet flows and hits what's left of the resemblance of the ditches here, and goes into the south phase, and then just right on into the north phase, and really is causing a lot of our problems with the standing water. First thing we determined was to make a... with the standing water. First thing we determined was to make a culvert, underground culvert going all the way from the existing concrete ditch all the way up Hazelwood Drive and intercepting a series of concrete ditches that's outlined in blue here, if you will, basically running along the front of the street and then also in the back of a couple of these houses here where we have standing water and then also going down Hazelwood Street. Using these to collect the water, as I mentioned, over to the concrete pipe and diverting all this water away from the southern half of the project and moving it down to this concrete ditch. Really felt like that this was going to be an advantage just so we could, we could effectively move the water and take it out. We have an excellent drainage system here in place. It's a, I'd say, a four to five foot wide concrete trapezoidal ditch that can really carry a lot of water. And again, the area here is not really the volume of water. It's really just a matter of getting the water to move. It really, everything's so slow-moving and just sits there. I'm sure if you go out there tonight, there'll be several ponds, much like some of the pictures that were on the board previously. And then the south area, really the key to it is to lower this drainage system, this pipe that crosses under Clark Boulevard, and so we can effectively lower the entire drainage system. Again, all the blue lines here are what we have proposed as concrete ditches to be able to lower all them, get a positive fall on it, and outlet this water to a, to an existing ditch that's at the Evergreen Cemetery. Again, the ditch at Evergreen Cemetery, it is a grass-lined ditch, but it's a large, a larger ditch and eventually will go onto a receiving stream. So we felt like if we could get it to these areas, that we would be in much better shape. And again, going back and just general maintenance items, replacing all the cross drains at all the driveways with concrete pipes. A lot of those now are metal pipes being crushed. Some of them have been in there since the beginning. Some of the street department has replaced over time. But felt good about... Felt good about the outcome of the study. And I also had mentioned, we were, at one time, we were worried about, about our subsurface drainage. Luckily, we've taken ratings in the wells for about five to six months, a couple of ratings through the wettest part of the season, which we're basically in now. And it did not indicate a groundwater problem, which we were, we were very happy with. A groundwater problem would have caused the needs for French drains and to do quite a bit more work. So we were, we were happy with that. The groundwater system seemed to fluctuate up and down with, based on rainfall events, but the good thing was that it was receding after, after a period of time. We did also include evaluating and reconstructing Leaf Avenue itself. It's currently a ditch section. We looked at the possibility of curb and guttering that and installing a closed drainage system. Due to the flatness of it, we really feel like the ditches, the concrete ditches will accept water better in this area and will also be able to move it more efficiently off. And we were also concerned, we didn't think that we'd really be getting as much for our money with that as that would cost up to three-quarters of a million dollars for the reconstruction through this entire, through this entire area.
Is that additional?
That would be additional to the, yes, to the numbers that we have here.
And would it do the north and the south portion of Leaf or just the south portion?
It would do both the north and the south portion. Speaking of costs, based on the aforementioned improvements, our consultant, consultant estimates the total cost of the construction to be about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I've included an itemized opinion of the construction cost, which is broken down into the north and south phases. As mentioned previously, an additional alternative which we included, the rebuilding of Leaf, was eliminated, which had a savings of an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand on the, for the project. We recommend funding of the project be from the upcoming capital improvement loan. If it's approved by council, we will provide, if it's approved, we will provide the council a refunding resolution. Until that, the project will be funded from the general fund until that loan is made. If approved, we'll be, we'll begin purchasing or obtaining right-of-entry and drainage easements necessary. We expect donations of these easements for the most part. There are a couple of off-site easements, really towards the end of these, right before we drop into Evergreen Cemetery, for a couple of properties that we may have to purchase the easements. We don't expect those to be any more than ten thousand dollars and they're included in the, our estimate for the project. Staff anticipates much of the off-site pipe work along Hazelwood Drive and leading to the outlet ditch at Evergreen Cemetery to begin in March. We may actually be able to begin that sooner if we can get some good weather. Much of the ditch work, ditch work will not be able to be started until late spring when the ground begins to dry out. As you see, most of that area is underwater now. Much of the work will continue throughout the summer with an anticipated completion of October of two thousand and ten. Staff further recommends that we complete the work with our annual concrete and storm drainage contract contractor to be used for the project. Rollins Excavating has expertise in these types of projects with the city, especially in a residential setting. Their experience has been invaluable. I would like to note that the proposed improvements will reestablish a quality public drainage system to the residents in the area. The system will be effective in routing much of the water that now stands for several months. However, some of these problems have occurred through water setting on private property in yards for an extended period of time. There may be some need for some of the residents maybe to bring in some field on maybe beside the driveway or something to, to just to address some localized flooding. This project will provide the backbone, the core of a, of an effective drainage system that they'll be able to, that will take care of most of the problems, but it may be, it may take a little additional work from them on their private property side. Mike Hughes with SEC is here. He has performed most of the work. I appreciate his help very much. Either of us would be happy to answer any questions you may have. I would like to thank the residents. They came out in force in both of our public meetings that we, we had in the neighborhood. Mr. Charles Francis is here with us tonight and I'd like to add, his input was, was very valuable to the overall success of the project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I guess the first question I have is why we wouldn't bid this project of this size?
To date, the plans that we have developed would not be a bid set of documents. It's more with some, with elevations and drainage routes. And it did take into consideration existing conditions, obviously. I think you would be, I think it would take quite a bit more experience, expense and quite a bit, a little more time also in order to get it to that level. Of course, the annual concrete and storm drainage contract is a bid contract was done in two thousand and eight. We've used it very effectively on projects, large projects, a little larger than this, and of course, smaller projects. That really is, as far as the area, the contractor that has that is really, that's their expertise is in working in folks' yards. This is a completely different item than our construction project than say going out and building a roadway, you know, through a field or even widening an existing road through houses. You're, you're really working in people's backyards. You're working with fences. You're working with, with dogs. We're sodding the yards back to make sure that they're, they're reestablished as quickly as possible. We felt like that in order to begin the project, save the money on the additional engineering and construction plans, that we would, we would come out ahead in the end.
How long is that contract with Rollins?
It's renewable every, every year for up to a three-year period. So it would be due to be bid again in two thousand and eleven, if I'm not mistaken.
Do we look at, on the construction agreement that we have, is that based upon current construction cost or is that something, is this cost that we negotiated in two thousand and eight?
It was.
That were bid, bid, well, bid, not negotiate, but?
Yes.
Bid out?
Yes. It was, it was based off of, for the most part, a lot of this is, is hourly rates of equipment and that is, that is based off the two thousand and eight bid price.
Mr. Gilli?
Mr. Chris. We never want to try to improve something that if it's going to be to the detriment of other folks. And I know that there have been some concerns raised. Have those all been addressed as far as you know with all sides involved in the area?
Yes, sir. I believe they have. And that was part of the uniqueness of, of this group, that it was a very mobilized, the citizens that were out there is very vocal group, if you will, but they, but I think in the, in the end, we wound up with a better project because of their, I know we did, because of their input. Some things that frankly, I didn't think about when we first took the project to them. I think they were able to voice some of those concerns and we went back and redesigned sections of the project to, to address them.
I really want to thank all the neighbors in that area for giving you that input and thank you and your department for listening to that and taking all that into consideration.
Thank you.
And Mr. Griffith, we've walked the area out there several times and I think we do have to thank the residents because it's not just residents who have moved into the neighborhood recently. I mean, we have residents such as Mr. Francis and Mr. Mason and who've lived there for forty or fifty years. So this is not something that has happened overnight that they have told us about. This is something that they've lived through. But a couple of the concerns that were voiced in the area, that we have three properties that, that face Clark Boulevard, specifically Mr. Mason and Mr. Francis's property, and we have worked back and forth, but we're looking now that we're going to be basically underground piping the water that's in front of their homes, but that's going to be pretty much on the curb side that we do that. So we should not be in their, their yards to do any work. Is that a fair assumption?
It is. And again, I appreciate Mr. Mason and Mr. Francis's input on that. Their, their property is relatively close to Clark Boulevard, their structure, that their house is. And some of the easements, some of the drainage pipe and really originally, the ditch that we had called out for that was really creeping back into their, under their, their doorstep, so to speak. We did evaluate that, looked at that, and saw that we had an opportunity to run that under the curb line. And really, I think, I know which will, it'll offer a better project for us in the end. And it will be completed within the city's existing driveway.
And explain why that we would not go back in some of these areas with a, with a grass-lined ditch system and that we're choosing to do not necessarily a concrete ditch. We're doing concrete-lined bottoms of the ditches. Why exactly are we doing that?
Well, I was, I was anticipating that question because it's a, it's really a reversal of our typical policy in the, in the city, especially with stormwater requirements and the quality. We have, to date, really promoted more grass-lined ditches as opposed to the, to the concrete line. But we really, this sort of, the sort of problem, the flatness of the area and really the water that stands for an extended period of time, that's one of the main problems that I saw some, I guess, three years ago, whenever I first went out and looked at it and Mr. Rick Templeton with the street department's been dealing with it a lot, a lot longer. We could not find a way to effectively reestablish the existing ditches or the supposed ditches that were there at one time. And really, when you get into areas where you're talking about point two, point three, point four percent, if I was to go in and sod that ditch after I cut it, I'd have water standing in it again. It's just that flat of an area. And it's got a lot, and I know you guys have been out there and looked at it, that really, the neighborhood, you're correct, it's, it's really home for the residents out there. Mr. Francis has been there fifty years and some of the other folks has been up there thirty, forty years. Lot of mature trees, fences that's up, really things that made a regular grass-lined ditch. We felt like that we would spend half a million dollars and then ten years from now, if I'm lucky enough to still be here, that I'd be right back up here asking you for half a million dollars again. So yes, it costs, you know, it's a little bit more investment on the front end, but I think this is something that'll last on the neighborhood of twenty-five to thirty years as opposed to ten years and right back to the same problem.
If you had to say an area in Murfreesboro that would be our greatest challenge in dealing with drainage, what area would it be?
I'd say it'd be this area right here. It's, as far as maintenance goes, it's one of our oldest subdivisions. It still has, you know, a lot of ditch sections and street sections. It's still a ditch section. And talked with Mr. Templeton, who outdates me by quite a bit, been with the city now for thirty years, and he concurred.
All right. Council has undertaken to have this drainage study and you now have the results before you have the explanation and the recommendation from the city's engineer. And I think you've worked very well with the neighborhood and I think that recommendation is before you now. So if you have any other questions at this time, I'll entertain those or if you're ready for a motion.
Mayor, I want to thank Mr. Griffith and Mr. Lyons for taking the time that, I know that they've walked the neighborhood and understand the issues out there and especially for the residents, the residents, their time that they've spent on neighborhood meetings and individual meetings with our city staff and then also SEC, that we can do the right thing and make a good choice to help the neighborhood. So with that, I move for approval.
Second.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. This time we'll consider recommendations of the planning commission, schedule a public hearing to consider zoning ordinance amendments to section seven, eighteen, and twenty-seven regarding site plan review and enhancements, to schedule a public hearing to consider amendments to the zoning ordinance in Murfreesboro City Code, section twenty-eight, twenty-nine, to implement subdivision regulations and standard street specifications, et cetera, et cetera. Mr. Hadelite, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. During this regular meeting on January the twentieth of two thousand and ten, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission considered and recommended approval of those two items. They both involve ordinance amendments and both of them need to be scheduled for public hearings. The item B, because of, experienced absolutely no public opposition at the planning commission level and because it was for the purpose of implementing the subdivision regulations and standard street specifications, which we have previously adopted, the staff recommended that we go ahead and pass these ordinances on first and possibly second reading before we have our public hearing so that we can have the, this become effective a little bit quicker. I'll be glad to answer questions about the- I'll be glad to answer questions about these two matters.
When would you suggest a public hearing?
Mayor, I'd suggest March 4th.
All right, we already have a hearing for February the 11th.
Yes, sir.
I think that would be...
Too soon.
Too soon.
Fifteen days publication plus.
March?
Four.
All right, council members, you have this recommendation for March the 4th. Move for approval. Second. All right, a motion to have a public hearing on March the 4th. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
All right, with that recommendation, then, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning, Sections 2, 5, 7, 13, 19, 24, 29 pertaining to subdivision regulations and street design specifications. Move for approval. Second. All right, you have a motion, second. Please call the roll, first reading.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 28, Streets and Sidewalks, Sections 28-1, 28-8, 28-11, 28-31, 28-32, 28-33, 28-41, 28-45, and 28-46, dealing with subdivision regulations and street design specifications. Move for passage on first reading. Second, motion, second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 29, Subdivisions, Maps, and Plats, Sections 29-1, 29-2, 29-3, 29-4, 29-6, 29-7, 29-8, 29-9, 29-10, 29-12, 29-13, 29-14, 29-15, 29-16, 29-17, 29-18, dealing with subdivision regulations and street design specifications. Move for passage. Second. Motion, second, on first reading. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Hadelite. Ms. Wright, do we have any beer permit?
Yes, sir, we have one tonight, Lanes, Trains, and Automobiles Entertainment Depot at 450 Butler Drive. When we have passed the 15 days from the ordinance we passed last week, they would like to have their beer permit issued. They have passed all of their codes, and they have met our background inspections. This is being sent to you tonight, just upon the occasion we might not meet next week, and they wouldn't have to wait.
All right, are there any questions, Ms. Wright, on this beer permit?
Move for approval.
All right, a motion, second. Thank you very much. Call the roll.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you. You have before you a list of the statements proposed to be paid. Is there a motion that we pay the bill?
So moved.
All right, a motion, second. Pay the bills. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Any other business to come before the staff or the council? Mr. Callow, welcome.
Thank you, sir. We have a number of items that we need to clean up here for community development. The first four items have to do with our neighborhood stabilization program in some of our properties. The first item, 2715 Pepperdine, we need to have you authorize a change order for $874.12, and funding will come from our NSP Continuum of Care grant. This will let us finish up the rehab on this project.
All right.
Mr. McFarland?
Yeah, Mr. Rick's involved in this change order.
And I'm going to be shorter than him, too.
Mr. Callow, the amount that we're paying for, that's more than a water heater, correct?
Yes, sir. It's a water heater, we've got some other things. We had a thermostat that I forgot, it's mostly things that were not on the original specification, so it's water heater plus a number of other smaller items. Yes, sir. Can I do the whole thing? Oh, great. I thought I was going to have to do five of them. Once we finish, once we do this change order and finish this project, which we expect to do probably no later than Saturday, we're going to be ready to transfer this property, and we'd like you to authorize that transfer. This is the house that will go to the Journey Home, and they've already got a family that they're going to move in as soon as we transfer title to them next Monday, is what we've got scheduled. The next item is...
And those funds will come from?
From NSP, the Continuum of Care grant. The next item is the same type of deal, it's 2733 Painted Pony, and we finished the rehab on that property, that one will go to one of our other partners. Then we open bids, this is item four, we open bids on Tuesday, received six bids for the rehab of our property on Dill Lane, and we would ask that you accept the low bid of $25,683.89 and authorize us to enter a contract. And then our final item is a change order on the 806 North Spring Street, that's the reconstruction project that we're doing at the corner of North Spring and Elm Street. This is going to allow us to finish up that project and move our homeowner in next week, is what we're planning. That would be a change order of $3,025, which would pick up the appliances, which we didn't have in the original bid, some other things that we've had to add along the way to make that project work. This money will come from our CDBGR grant, which is part of the stimulus, the ERA program.
All right, we have these recommendations from the Community Development Director. Are there any questions?
Mr. Callow, the two items that you have that constitute or represent transfers of property?
Right.
Those properties will continue to be used to single-family residences?
That is correct.
And they are not transitional housing?
They are not.
This is permanent housing?
Absolutely.
For those individual families.
In fact, the terms of our grant from Tennessee Housing Development Agency require that these houses be used for permanent or permanently supportive housing, which means that you have to have a lease, it has to go to a NSP-eligible family, it has to be at a rent that either meets or is lower than NSP rent, so there will be a lease of at least six months on all of these properties.
Thank you, sir.
And we will be monitoring that on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor, if there are no other questions, I move for approval. Second. All right, you have a motion, and second. Any questions on the motion? If not, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Any other business from staff or the council to come before the council at this time? If not, you're adjourned.